All right, first of all, would you like to introduce our wonderful a cappella group? Mrs. Penney?
I would love to turn it over to Mr. David Piper, who is the teacher associated with the a cappella group. I know you've all heard about their reputation. I would call them just famously talented. And we're really thrilled that we have a teaching and learning highlight that is performance-based, because that is unusual for us. So, welcome to all the students. Thanks for taking time. And take it away, Mr. Piper.
All right. We're going to sing "I Heard It Through the Grapevine." It's going to feature Ellen Carlton.
"I Heard It Through the Grapevine."
One, two, three.
(singing) Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. 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 Bet you wonder how I knew. Bet you wondered how I knew. You make me blue. Bet you planned to make me blue. For you knew before. I'm trying to be honest. You know I loved you more. You know I love you much more. Took me by surprise, I must say. When I found it out yesterday. I heard it through the grapevine. Not much longer would you be mine? I heard it through the grapevine. And I'm just about to lose my mind. Honey, honey. Yeah. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. I'm no man. Ain't supposed to cry. No man is supposed to cry. I can't hold his eyes. Losing you. What am I like, see? There's no comparison. Seeing that much you need. You could have told me yourself. That you loved someone else. I heard it through the grapevine. Not much longer would you be mine? I heard it through the grapevine. And I'm just about to lose my mind. Honey, honey. Yeah. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Do. Do, 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 do. People say believe have what you see. Have what you see. Know what you hear. I can't be confused. Can you help me? I'd be true. Please tell me, see. Did you let me go? Or the other guy you loved before. I heard it through the grapevine. Not much longer would you be mine? I heard it through the grapevine. And I'm just about to lose my mind. Honey, honey. Yeah. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Honey, honey. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Girl. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Through the grapevine, I'm much longer. Through the grapevine.
Well, they got one more. They have one more song.
Wow, she's taking...
That's not interrupt. That's not interrupt. Go on, fine.
Before we start the next song, I just want to say like a few things about the a cappella choir. This is actually one of two groups that we have. This is the mixed a cappella choir, which is our larger group. And then we have an all-women's group. And we've been in this structure for as long as Mr. Piper's been here, so for about like a year and a half. And before, it was a little bit less structured. But we rehearse on Tuesday nights for an hour and a half. And this group rehearses on Wednesday mornings at 6:45. And the women's group rehearses on Monday mornings at 6:45. And I just think this is a really cool environment, because we have a mix of vocalists and instrumentalists. Can you raise your hand if you're an instrumentalist?
Oh.
And if you're primarily a vocalist.
Oh.
And then in the women's group, we have some orchestra members as well. And I think this is cool, because we get to sing more modern music than we usually would. And you get like a really awesome sense of camaraderie between everybody, because I think making music in a group is one of like the fastest ways to get to know people. And you get kind of like that intimate relationship that you wouldn't get in another environment. So.
And would you have, you have a second selection for us?
Uh, yeah.
Great enjoyment.
Yeah, we'll be singing "Steal My Kisses," which will feature you there.
Oh.
(singing) 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 (singing)
So, now we need to know each of your names, but it has to be somebody has to come and get a microphone. Because that's, then we make sure people at home can hear through the mic.
There's a microphone.
Nick, you're, any, either one.
And could you also?
Grab it.
I know, I only know Nick is a junior. So when you say your name, could you also tell us what year you are in high school, please?
Um, we don't have a portable, um, that's taped.
Everything is taped.
That's, that's okay. That's pretty good.
Oh, Mrs. Myers-Packler, brilliant.
It'll come up to the folded pass.
(laughing).
Okay, so I'm Nick Adair, and I'm a junior.
Uh, I'm Tim Smith, and I'm a senior.
Nice.
I'm Sasha Greenhouse, and I'm a junior.
Lauren Field, and I'm a senior.
I'm Rob Mifette, and I'm a freshman.
Mara Camfield, and I'm a junior.
I'm Curtis Hudson, and I'm a senior.
I'm Jenna Cherry, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Shane Walsh, and I'm a senior.
I'm Matt Mello, and I'm a junior.
I'm Emma Carlton, and I'm a senior.
I'm Molly Madigan, and I'm a junior.
And I'm Maureen Sharp, and I'm a senior.
Well, Mr. Piper, I, I don't honestly know what to say, except I just have one word that came to mind, that's exquisite. Just exquisite.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you what they're doing, and they, they put a lot of time and effort in after school and before school, like you heard, so it's really a joy to share it with all of you. Thank you.
You know, over the years, we've invested a lot of time, energy, and money in the music program, and this is why we do it.
Yeah.
Because we believe in these kids and what they can produce. And I think we should get a tape and send it into America's Got Talent and get you a copy of it. And that first song, I loved it. That's right out of my era.
Mine too.
Yes, you?
I'd like to just say, wow.
I think it's awesome.
Can we come listen to some of your rehearsals? Our...
If you can get up there.
We have a concert on February 7th, next Thursday. And it will feature this group, the all-women's group, as well as we have a guest group from Norwood, a mixed group called Norwood Sound Effects. So it should be a great evening, next Thursday at 7 o'clock.
I'll have to watch the recording. I'm going to be in Texas next Thursday evening.
No problem.
I'll be there. I'll be there, too.
Now, I have a question. Mr. Massey does not seem to be here.
He's here.
Oh, he's here, okay, because I, well, I was...
He's taking his usual backseat.
His backseat. I, I have a question for him when he comes forward, okay.
He's right there.
Well, I know, but it's not his turn yet.
Oh, about the Mingus thing. Mr. Massey, I know you're so proud of everything that your department does and everything your kids do, but that was truly exquisite, really.
We should have more school committee meetings like this.
Maybe we should just adjourn for the rest of the night, see what else they have.
Would you like to practice your concert things for us, while I'm willing?
Yeah.
I can wave some readings.
I think that would be unfair. They prepared these two specially for our entertainment, and I thought it was just, I mean, honestly, I think one cries beautiful. So, amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Any of you thinking of maybe going on and doing something with music, either hands-on or music education?
Raise your hand if you're considering majoring in music.
Great.
Raise your hand if you're considering minoring in music, or singing in an ensemble at the college level.
Uh, wow.
Great. You'll all be...
You should.
Involved in music somewhere in college, great.
And then we'll follow all of your careers later, and we'll remember you.
And invite you back as guest artists.
Fabulous.
Wonderful.
Beautiful. Thank you all.
Just roll time.
That was just excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great.
It was awesome. So, let's see, we still waiting for one of your members?
I, he's sick.
Oh, 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 good thing. Well, then...
Visitors, your minutes, right?
Yes, you have to make your minutes. And then we'll go to the next one.
All right. I think we, if you, yes, we will go on to minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Are there regular ones?
Well, we have quite a few minutes. So let's take them in order. January 7th for the executive session. Any additions, corrections?
Are you doing the record, regular meeting first?
Well, we have...
Can I take mine?
Oh, I'm sorry, I've been...
So the first one in order is the policy subcommittee, January 4th? Is that what you have first?
Right, that's what I hit first.
Okay.
I have no changes.
Okay. I have no changes.
You were there.
It's just that and that.
This is you and Tina.
So I, I moved, we approved these back.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, approved.
Did you have a second?
A second? Well, I have to second it, yes, they're just the two of us.
That's right.
All right, now, do we have our regular meeting next?
Yes. I'll make a motion to accept the meetings of January 7th.
Second.
All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Then do we have our executive session draft?
Yes, of January 7th.
Of January 7th.
Motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor? Five, zero, zero.
All set, Madam Chair?
All set. So now, we will invite Mr. Massey.
Yes, so we have Mrs. Myers-Packler, Mr. Massey here. Essentially, it's to approve overnight travel, but before we get to that official move, we have three of the students who have made it into the finals for the jazz combo in the very famous Charles Mingus competition. And we have three of the students here, so we have in order left to right, we have Nick Adair, drums. We have Kevin Scollins, guitar. We have Alexa Dumont, plays bass. And I can still remember when you were a freshman and starting out playing bass, and I saw you at the concert in the comments, so it's unbelievable. And I just found out Alex Olson on the piano is sick, so we hope he feels better. So, students, if you would just like to come up a little bit, drag a couple of chairs up, and just come up in front of that table, in case we want to ask you questions. And maybe have Mr. Massey explain a little bit about the competition? Because it is quite an achievement to be a finalist in the Mingus competition.
There is a annual contest festival at Manhattan School of Music, sponsored by Sue Mingus and the Mingus Big Band, to celebrate the music of Charles Mingus, one of the most important jazz composers in American history. And students can send in audition tapes in the category of combos or big bands, and they're selected for the finals. And they'll spend a weekend in New York, be adjudicated, go to some jazz clubs and hear professionals and so forth, workshops, film setting, things like that. So these four students prepared original arrangements of music, rather complex music of Charles Mingus. And hopefully you'll have them back sometime, you should hear them play. If you have time, they can come in and play a tune for you. I think you should hear it sometime.
Sign them up.
Yep. Because they, they're doing this complex music that they've arranged themselves, studied themselves, put these arrangements together, made a recording, actually, Mr. Piper helped them, donated his time, among other things that he does well. He's a recording engineer. Anyway, and they were selected from the country as one of the three finalists in the category of public high school combos. There's another category for like regional combos and university-sponsored regional groups. But for single schools, that they were selected among three. So it's a very prestigious achievement, and they did it on themselves, by themselves. So they should be commended for that, and you should hear them. They, they sound fabulous.
So, so maybe after the, we know you're focused on preparing for the Mingus competition, which is coming up in a few weeks. So maybe at some point when you get back, we'll have you on either late, I think late February where you have some, it could be like the first meeting in March, when you perform for us.
Help us herald in spring.
So what was the most challenging part of preparing for it? Just to put in your, your tape?
Um, I'd say finding rehearsal time and putting the arrangements together.
Did you put your own arrangements together?
Yeah, we all collaborated on them.
Yeah, we took original pieces by Mingus, and instead of playing what he played, we put our own ideas into it, emitted our own.
Wow.
Were there four individual tapes, or were you playing together?
There, we were playing together.
So you're up against two other jazz combos, in, one in California, one in New Jersey? Is that what I mean?
Yes.
And they're selected throughout the country?
Yes.
From throughout the country?
And I would argue that regardless of where you play, being one of three from across the country is already an award.
Absolutely.
Do you guys feel that way?
Yes.
Pretty happy to go. Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Steve, have we had students do this before, or?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Mingus.
This is the second time we've had a group in the finals. I think it was four years, three or four years ago.
And your competition, does it Sunday night in February?
Yes. But we're going on February 15th for the weekend.
Well, all the best. You'll represent us well, and everyone's very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
So it's the task of the school committee, we're recommending that you approve an overnight trip for the four musical students at Foxborough High School, who are selected by the Charles Mingus Institute to participate in high school competition at the Manhattan, prestigious Manhattan School of Music in New York City. I would, I would just like to disclose that my son, Nick Adair, is one of the members of this, so that I'll be voting, but obviously...
Is that why he blew a kiss earlier? I thought that was even a little earlier to me.
So I just, no, in the spirit of disclosure, I want to make sure that that's disclosed as I'm voting on this.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Go get them.
Thank you.
Mr. Massey, I do have one question. Rather than repeat what I heard hearsay, I'd like you to, to clarify this. Has there been a change about how you can apply for the Ellington Contest? Is, have there been, the country's been divided?
Yeah, that's another festival that we're sending a big band recording.
Right, but I think the public might like to know that the structure of the...
Yep. They've, they've used different structures over the years. They've changed it to a regional structure. There are five regions now, and then Canada and U.S., and they're going to take three outstanding groups from each region. So it's a slightly different approach. It's still quite competitive.
Oh, yes, I would imagine, but does, does that make it easier for people to maybe be accepted?
No.
No.
I don't think it's any easier. I think it's highly selective, and we've been lucky. We've done it a number of times, but every year, we, we go into it with our eyes open.
Right.
We're talking about the best 15 high school jazz bands in the country.
And Canada.
And Canada, yeah, actually.
But they are, they're drawn from five different regions.
Yeah, so it's kind of, they're, I don't know exactly what their reasoning is, but they're just changing them all, yeah. And that festival is not just public high schools, that's any groups, including fine arts high schools, consortium high schools, like regional groups, so that...
And music high schools.
Right, fine arts high schools. But it's all right.
And you have finished your recording, you weren't...
We have, so we'll see what happens.
And it has, we're now waiting.
Well, we're just sending it in this week. Of course, they're all in the big band as well, so that's a different process. But, yeah, we'd, we'd love to make that, we...
In the meantime, you worry about the rest of your classes, right?
Exactly.
You squeeze in the other, the core subjects, so you can graduate.
Just to put in your, your tape.
Um, I'd say, uh, finding rehearsal time and putting the, uh, the arrangements together.
Did you put your own arrangements together?
Yeah, we all collaborated on them.
Yeah, we took original pieces by Magus and instead of playing what he played, we put our own ideas into it. And made it our own.
Wow.
Were there four individual tapes or were you playing together?
There. We were playing together.
So you're up against two other jazz combos in, one in California, one in New Jersey, is that what I mean?
Yes.
And they're selected throughout the country?
Yes.
From throughout the country.
And I would argue that regardless of where you play, being one of three from across the country is already an award.
Absolutely.
Do you guys feel that way?
Yes.
Pretty happy to go.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Steve, have we had students do this before or?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Magus.
This is the second time we've had a group in the finals. I think it was four years, three or four years ago.
And your competition does a Sunday night in February?
Yes, but we're going on February 15th for the weekend.
Well, all the best. You'll represent us well and everyone's very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
So, um, it's the task of the school. We're recommending that you approve an overnight trip for the four music students at Foxborough High School, who are selected by the Charles Magus Institute to participate in high school competition at the Manhattan, prestigious Manhattan School of Music in New York City.
I would, I would just like to disclose that my son, Nick Adair, is one of the members of this, so that I'll be voting, but obviously.
Is that why he blew a kiss earlier? I thought that was even a little earlier to me.
So I just, no, in the spirit of disclosure, I want to make sure that that's disclosed as I'm voting on this.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Five, five zero zero.
Go get 'em.
Thank you.
Mr. Massey, I do have one question. Rather than repeat what I've heard hearsay, I'd like you to, to clarify this. Has there been a change about how you can apply for the Ellington contest? Is, have there been, the country's been divided?
Yeah, that's another festival that we're sending a big band recording.
Right, but I think the public might like to know that the structure of the, um...
Yeah, they've, they've used different structures over the years. They've changed it to a regional structure. There are five regions now and then. Canada and US and they're gonna take three outstanding groups from each region. So it's a slightly different approach. It's still quite competitive.
Oh, yes, I would imagine, but does, does that, um, make it easier for people to maybe be accepted?
No.
No.
I don't think it's any easier. I think it's highly selective and we've been lucky. We've done it a number of times, but every year we, we go into it with our eyes open.
Right.
We're talking about the best fifteen high school jazz bands in the country.
And Canada.
And Canada, yeah, actually.
But they are, they're drawn from five different regions.
Yeah, so it's kind of a, they're, I don't know exactly what their reasoning is, but they're just changing the model, yeah. And that festival is not just public high schools, that's any groups, including fine arts high schools, um, consortium high schools, like regional groups, so that...
And music high schools.
Right, fine arts high schools. But, it's all right.
And you have finished your recording.
We have, so, see what happens.
And it has, we're now waiting.
Well, we're just sending it in this week. Of course, they're all in the big band as well, so that's a different process, but, yeah, we'd, we'd love to make that, we...
In the meantime, you worry about the rest of your classes, right?
Exactly.
You squeeze in the other, the core subjects, so you can graduate. And Fall Home Music in College. Well, thank you. Oh, yes.
Maybe, maybe just before they leave, we could thank Mr. Piper and Mr. Massey again publicly, because I know, I think we may have thanked Mr. Piper earlier with the acapella group, but we always look for such great excellence in our teachers and from these two, certainly seen it tonight, and I just wanted one more time to say thank you to both of you guys for what you do.
Great. We have a concert this Thursday night, our Winterfest concert, so I'd love to have the people come up, hear our groups. It's not a jazz concert, it's orchestra and choir and, and concert bands, so hopefully people will come, seven o'clock.
Uh, we'd also like to thank Mr. Massey and all the music program and all of our private teachers for, uh, giving us the...
And our parents.
And our parents, of course, for giving us the opportunity to, uh, go to this festival. And again, Mr. Piper, for, uh, recording our tape.
No kidding. It's great.
Good luck.
Enjoy your trip.
Thank you.
Now, while, while we're on highlights, I would like to say what a fine group of young people, thirty-six people, were inducted into the National Honor Society. I simply cannot mention all thirty-six people, but for me, it is a thrill to be sitting in the audience and watching some of my former students beaming in the audience, then in the foyer, then in the cafeteria, because their son or daughter has been in, inducted into National Honor Society. Congratulations to your son, Mrs. Adair, and then there was Sue Dring, a former student, who, her son was a senior and one of the inductors for the new people coming in. And I can't remember everybody's, um, married name, but Jackie Walsh, but of her marriage, she was standing there so proud of her daughter. And Lisa Marino, one, another former student, and Frank Spillane was there watching his oldest daughter become inducted. And each of the inductees are asked to write a minute or two, um, brief, uh, speech telling of one adult that has really helped influence their life and helped them become the kind of person they are. And, you know, when another former student, Dale Wigdor, is mentioned as being a leader, I mean, we live in a wonderful community.
I know I'm a little off. I was gonna mention this on other matters, but it, to wrap up wonderful things and achievements of our students, if, if people wouldn't mind, since I think it's deserving, if you read last week's reporter, we had a Foxborough High School senior, Ahili Chatapadye, I hope I'm doing justice by her name. She was named one of three hundred semifinalists in the Intel Science Talent Search for two thousand thirteen. And, um, go online to the Foxborough Report and read all about her. Quite an unbelievable, um, young scientist. And we'd love to have her come to a future meeting to tell us about her project, because that is beyond what anybody can expect of a high school student. And she, she's quite, she's quite the scientist, so I think that'd be wonderful to hear about. And I didn't wanna go the evening without acknowledging that, since we're talking about family's things. So congratulations to her and all her hard work, and we look forward to hearing directly from her in the future.
These make our meetings really worthwhile for me, this exciting part. All right, on to FY fourteen budget public hearing and vote of recommendation.
So, uh, turn it over to Mr. Yukna and the committee and as well as myself, if anybody wants to, um, ask questions or if we're kinda wondering at this point what individual questions the committee might have about the FY fourteen proposed budget. And tonight is the, the night that you take a vote on the bottom line budget, but you may have questions in the interim. You know, we had our first hearing in December and we had our, that was our public hearing, and we met again in January earlier this month, discussed our budget priorities, and, um, we're here tonight to discuss the overall budget, any remaining questions you may have, or the, the idea of the budget priorities, which we follow the same process as last year. We just thought I'd turn it over to the committee and see what questions you have.
I, I wonder if, um, Bill, you might just open with maybe some summary comments, um, for the public at home and for us. I know we've been on this, as Debbie said, a few times, but do you have any, kinda, I know it's off the cuff, but...
Yeah, no, um, you know, first of all, as, as we've said before, the, um, the process really involves us working with the town side as well to understand the revenue basis. Um, and, um, we do start that whole process off with obviously putting in a placeholder before we're able to actually accomplish developing the full budget. Um, we've done that as the town stands right now. I think the preliminary budget that was put out was, uh, seventy-five thousand to the good. Uh, I know, uh, in further discussions with Randy and Kevin, which Deb and I had last week, uh, they further cut theirs back. So now I believe it's a little over two hundred thousand, uh, to the good. And, uh, in further conversations, obviously with them, um, you know, the priority list came up. So that's, you know, one of the items that you need to discuss tonight as to how you want to go forward with that. The budget itself is, is, uh, basically a roll forward of salaries. Um, as you know, that's the largest portion of our budget. We take all of the positions, um, and we will actually move them forward on the salary scale, on the step scale, based on educational achievements. And, you know, develop what the cost is going to be next year for that. Um, as you also know, we're in a negotiations year, so we, we have to develop a, um, a portion of what we believe we need to hold as well to be able to settle a budget through the contract negotiations. We've accomplished that within this budget as well, and hopefully that will work out to, uh, what we expect. We also look at all of the expenses. As, uh, Deb and I told you in one of the last meetings, we did a realignment where we went through the expenses and made sure that we're, where we are budgeting is where we actually need the money. There has been shifts over the years relative to how we buy textbooks and supplies. A lot more has gone towards the technology side, because that's the world we live in. Um, so we've had to reallocate some of the funds that we've used in other directions. We've also added a little bit of additional funding on the expense side, just because of that technology requirement. A lot more licensing, uh, that we have to do on an annual basis. Um, we, uh, obviously, a few years ago, you adopted the Sangari Science Program. Um, the program was adopted with a two-year supply, uh, in its original purchase. We're now in the third year, so there are consumables there, um, that obviously we do have to be thoughtful and replace. But, you know, we have a team that are looking at that right now, so that they don't just buy, they're gonna buy what they need and what they feel that we use the, uh, in quantity. Um, obviously, if we can buy things outside of the program that, that meet the same needs, we'll do that to keep the costs down. But again, that's been built into this budget as well. So I think we've, we've accomplished the goals of, of bringing the district forward, um, you know, class sizes remaining, uh, as you had them. So no real changes on that side, and, uh, you know, this budget at the, at the numbers we're at right now can satisfy, we believe, all of that, uh, you know, pending, uh, successful negotiation of the contract, so...
Thank you.
I think it's important for us to go in with, um, a budget line that it's what we want. If we have to go down, we have to go down, but we can't go up. And we've, you know, talked about that many times in the past. So I think we have to put it out there and show the public what it takes to educate a child here in Foxborough and what the wants and needs are. And, you know, technology is gonna be a huge, huge thing in the future. If they change the MCAS to online, if we're not ready and able to do that, we're gonna be in serious trouble. So, you know, when you talk about some of the other communities and that they don't have the technology, I don't know what in the name of God they're gonna do, but needless to say, we don't have to worry about that. But I think we need to be prepared here in Foxborough, because it is gonna happen. So if we don't, if we only have one or two computers for thirty kids to take a test on, we're not gonna be able to do this. So, you know, we have to stay on top of technology. We have to make sure the teachers are educated and feel comfortable with it and that the students are able, have access to the equipment. So it, it's not something that we can ever slack off on.
And I think that's, uh, you know, one of the, the biggest points that, uh, you know, and I, I believe Deb will speak to this part of it, but, um, we are putting and have infused a lot of technology into the schools over the last few years, and we continue to, whether it's interactive whiteboards, um, you know, the, uh, the Red Cat sound systems, um, you know, just the, the programs that are now available, whether it's on our, our, you know, sped side with IEPs or whether it's in our regular educational classrooms. Um, you know, a lot of teachers who have not been, uh, in the classroom themselves in, in a few years are getting introduced to a lot of stuff very quickly here. Um, and it really, if we want it to be successful, to your point, we are going to need to teach them how to use it as efficiently as they possibly can to get everything out of it. So it is gonna be one of the biggest challenges, I think, we face, uh, over the next few years, is really leveraging what we've done.
If they don't have the, if they don't have the support system, Bill, it can't function, and they're gonna shy away from it. And that's not gonna be the student's advantage. And we've all seen it in the past. You bury your head in your sand if you don't think it didn't happen, because it did, because you can put twenty computers in a classroom, but if you don't have a teacher who's comfortable with it and has the backup and the support of a good technology team, we're lost. We might as well not have any computers in that classroom. So we have to make them comfortable, well-versed in what they're doing, and the stuff will be used.
Yeah, I, I think all that's a good point, because we, we talk about teachers being content experts, but what, what's happening now in education the last few years and certainly going forward is that it's not enough to be an expert in your content area. You have to know how to leverage a technology to help kids learn more effectively. So, um, it, it's becoming more and more that the technology is helping kids and, and teachers keep up with the content, be able to access it a little bit more readily. So, you know, we, we, we're getting to the point, we can't remember the last solution that we, um, identified, small or large, wasn't technology-based. So that's where all of our needs are, um, bar none, is in the support of educational technologies and how we're using them, how we're using the students and how teachers are learning to use them as well.
You watch the younger children coming in. I mean, I look at my grandchildren, and what they can do at age four and five is, I mean, they know how to back in and back out and use codes and, I mean, their hands are so little, they've got two hands on the mouse and I didn't accommodate it, so...
Do they, do they teach?
Oh, they teach.
May I say?
No, I think they're more like my son, who, who does computers. It's like, get out of my way and let me do it. Well, I'm not gonna learn that way. I tell everybody my two favorite keys are backspace and delete, so... It's amazing, but if you're, if you're not on top of technology, even in my field, it's, wow, brutal, brutal. So we have to, we have to have the support someplace.
There are, um, a few things that give me comfort that we've done a good job on the budget, uh, which I'll just share primarily for the public. But one is, first of all, the fact that you and Debbie continue to collaborate with the municipal leaders makes me feel comfortable that we are, uh, in sync with what the town is out looking, and you made comments to that upfront. Secondly, we're roughly within one percentage point increase of what we were a year ago, uh, year to year. So I don't think we're doing anything too dramatic. And again, I, I offer that for the public, who may not have seen prior meetings that we've televised or may not have in front of them the documents we have. So from a year-to-year percentage increase, we're not doing anything too, uh, too terribly dram, uh, dramatic. Thirdly, we built in the idea of, uh, this cost increase that we're anticipating for our staff, as you referenced. And this is a year that, that we have to take that into account. And fourth and finally, one of the things I think about, which may be simplistic, but, but meaningful to me, is every one of us at the table, I guess with the exception maybe of Amy, you know, sits here not only as a superintendent and a, a business administrator, but also as a taxpayer. So I know we all think about this, uh, wearing both sides of our hat, and, um, and so I, I feel comfortable personally with where we are in the budget. We've spent a lot of time, if anyone wants more information, then go back to prior meeting, uh, where you went through the details and the things you summarized for us now, so, uh, personally, I'm, I'm comfortable.
I appreciate those points, because we did put a lot of work into not taking what would be, I'm gonna say, a simpler, more traditional approach, which is take all the supply line, which go up by a certain percent. We really went through line by line very thoughtfully. And as you remember from our other presentations, we actually didn't increase many line items at all, and we just increased where we really needed, as Bill said, in the licensing and the technology. And we left everything else flat, because that seems to be where we're shifting, and what we thought we could do without increasing, we certainly did. As you mentioned, this is a bargaining year, so it's a little bit, you know, trickier to make sure all your needs are met. But, you know, we feel that we've really been responsible, and we do meet regularly with the town side folks. And they do have a goal to achieve in terms of financial management going into the future with the revenues that they're projecting. And we do take seriously our part, our contribution on behalf of the committee in, um, assisting with that effort. So in our meeting with them, they're pretty comfortable where we are, even, you know, a little bit, um, maybe even considering something else. But, um, as time goes on, we'll continue to meet with them, and if it changes, you know, we're continuing to be collaborative with them. Because it is our obligation to continue to, you know, contribute to the financial health of the community going forward.
You know, building on that point, um, again, for the benefit of the public, you know, what we have in front of us is a list page by page of either building level request or department level request. And one of the things I think that's telling is not every one of these pages goes up. You have pages that go down, you know, Plan Operations is one that I think the public can relate to or expect with some of the things we've done here, for example, where, as you say, you know, we could just add an incremental percentage to every, every page, and we don't. I mean, you've got pages here, and you've got year-to-year decline in the request. And so, to me, that's another sign of responsibility in what we're doing with the budget request.
I think what we did when we redid the school and redid the, I, the Ahern School was with the intent that it might cost us now, but it's gonna save us later, manage your costs, and I think that's gonna come to fruition. But, um, you know, when, when you look at what the governor's proposing for education, and somebody's gonna pay for it. And if, if we're not gonna pay for it on a local level, we are gonna pay it on a state level, because taxes are gonna go up. There's just no way of getting around it. So I, I think we're all investing in education, but, um, I think we still all have to be mindful of who's gonna pay for it. And I think we've done that over the past years, because we have collaborated with the town. It's not, well, it's cut and dry, this is what we get and this, no. So I, I think we've had an encourage and open dialogue, and, you know, obviously that's gonna continue, so... It's not the, the final straw, but it's, it is what it is.
You had talked about in the past, too, about shifting some of the, um, of the, uh, lines here and making it more transparent, where, where some of the monies are going. I think that lends, you know, definitely another layer to the kind of depth that's been spent by both of you and, um, in this budget. And I, I share with more of these concerns, obviously, about moving forward, where, you know, where the money's gonna come from. But, um, I mean, I think it's, it's very clear from your presentation what the needs are to move forward. And, you know, we've been talking about technology for several years, and we've been trying to inch our way there every year, you know, getting closer to, to getting the things that we need. But, um, I think it's just, obviously, it's becoming more apparent with each year what we need to do as a district to ensure that we are giving that kind of education and support to our teachers, to our students, and, uh, that's the way it is. And we can't, we can't not see that, so I think it's a very fair...
I, I think on the important, the, the, because I'm somewhat cognizant that we're gonna have someone say this to us, but, you know, we, we did do the high school, or unfortunately, it was a, a four-year process effectively. So we're finishing it now, so everybody's acting like the, the process is a relatively new process. But the process started five years ago. I mean, you look at a lot of these schools that are coming out, the new high schools that are coming out with brand-new technology, where there are one-to-one iPads and everything else like that. They were able to put it in, the iPad didn't exist five years ago, so it wasn't a technology you could have anticipated at the time, uh, but they were able to put it into their plans as they were moving forward, and they had that as an advantage. Um, you know, again, unfortunately, that's not something that even existed when we started this project. So it is something that you're gonna have to do gradually, but, you know, it's no different than when you started to deploy the, the whiteboards and everything like that. Everything will take a little bit of time. We're not gonna be like the private sector where they can go out and do everything in big chunks. You know, we have to be piece by piece, but as long as we, you know, I think thoughtfully build on, on the program and, and make the, the, the building blocks that will actually get us through the end here, I think, uh, you know, that's what these budgets hopefully will do as we move forward.
You know, we were fortunate in the past, we've had faces or be it the PTAs or anything that helped us get started with some of these things. But I think we all need to understand that when, when a foundation or whatever invests in the educational system, it's with the idea that we are gonna carry on, that they're not gonna, you know, sponsor it from, you know, an ad for item. And, and I think we've been very receptive that when something is put in place, if it works, we buy into it and we try to extend it. And I think that's what we've done over the years, so, you know, it's to everybody's advantage. But, um, you know, some people are gonna look at it and go, oh, my God, you know, look at that money. But, um, we're investing in our children's futures, and, uh, you can't change that, no matter how you look at it. And maintenance repairs, if we don't maintain our buildings, we're in serious trouble. So, um, you know, the bottom line is the bottom line.
As Deb had said, you, you asked us to bring forward a priority list, uh, which was submitted to you guys, um, at the last meeting. And, uh, as you know, you have one last shot here to make a decision, what you want to do. You brought that up as a discussion point. This is the, uh, probably the thirtieth year vote has to be completed, so this is your last meeting by that, before that time. So that's, that's the last open item. Um, and if you're interested in doing something, it's now. If not, it's the budget as it stands.
In, in looking at this, I would rather see us, we have a priority list, so we know if we have to cut, we know how it's gonna fall, if, as long as we all agree on this. But I would, um, make a recommendation that we include all of these items in our budget. We can always decrease it, we can't raise it. So I, I just think, because we don't know what monies ultimately are gonna be available when we come to town meeting. And I think it's just, I think it's a little bit short-sighted on our part to say we need these things and then walk away from them. I think you need to put them in there, and if we have to, um, back down on the numbers, then we'll back down accordingly. But this is what we need. So I, I, I'm for putting them in there, and then if and when we have to cut them, then we cut them. We can go down, can't go up.
I, as I looked at this, I highlighted the technology integration specialist, especially with, we're going to have to change our whole format for testing and everything.
That's in the future. We have more of a day-to-day problem, which is...
Right.
One person trying to support teachers' integration technology at five schools. So we're trying different things. We tried different schedules last year. Amy's tried a more of a rotation thing this year, but, you know, basically, if, if you're struggling with how to employ technology in your classroom, she's there to help you once every five days, so...
It's not a lot.
It, it is, it's ineffective. It, I think that's why, kind of basic understanding.
And then what happens when you don't have access to that resource?
You wait.
Well, not only do you wait, what, you know, the whole process of, of what you were going to be doing with that technology gets stalled.
Right. So you might, you might be able to confer with that person and say, I'd like to do X and Y, I'd like to do it this way. But then you can't even say, say, okay, let's plan that and let's try it tomorrow. You know, I'll, I'll demonstrate it first to the kids tomorrow. It's like, well, what are you doing five days from now? And, and by then, your curriculum might have moved on. So it is quite inefficient the way we have it now. And we could leverage it to a much greater extent if we could cheer two people among five schools.
I, I, with all the constraints of, um, our budgeting, I would like to see us, if I have a vote, I would vote to move just the technology integration specialist ahead. That is prioritized, it is number one. I would like to have us add that fifty-four thousand to our bottom line. And then if the monies do not come through, we do not fund that. I'd like to see us take the very top one.
What's our anticipated budget right now, today, as we, I mean, you said you've been...
It's, maybe you've just... Yep, the page before, yes, the page before.
But I mean...
As it stood, without this priority list...
Yeah, without the...
It's at twenty-nine million, three hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight seventy.
But I mean, in terms of how much we might have more access to. That's what I'm talking about, not that, but, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
Yeah, in the conversation with the town, with Randy and Kevin, the, the issue here is like last year, if you remember, you know, we went into town meeting with about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar delta, which was in the town's favor. But that money really was targeted for specific things that they wanted to try to accomplish. You know, part of it went to the town stabilization fund...
Right.
And they had a number of other areas that they kinda put that money into to, uh, you know, to do a couple of things. Hopefully to, to help on the CIP side down the road as one factor, and, and I think that's important to remember, because, you know, we are also a big beneficiary of the, the CIP process. So I, I think, you know, at this point, I know, um, what both Kevin and Randy would like to get to is a similar number to last year, about the four-hundred-thousand range, again, with the idea that they would finally get the stabilization fund up to a level that is five percent of the operating budget, um, with an idea that they would have potentially more money either put away into a CIP fund, uh, for this year, or something that's a, a longer-term, uh, you know, portion for that. So, and, and I think, you know, as taxpayers, all of us should be looking at that as a, as a positive, uh, as to how they're, they're rolling this thing forward. So, um, there is some upside, you know, possibilities here. And I guess that's the only thing where I come comfortable with potentially bringing something forward, is that what is going on with the governor's budget right now, um, you know, whether that will make it through the House and the Senate, I don't know. But the, you know, the reality is for any of those to exist means taxing. So, um, but we won't know that really, to be honest with you, until we do get to close to the Maytown meeting. So, uh, I think to your point, you know, maybe if you, if you have an option, I, I, I hear what you're saying on four. I think it's unrealistic to think that they would have that kind of, of funding even close to that available. So I think picking your number-one priority probably is very reasonable. And, and maybe not even likely to make it to the end, depending on how the, the, the revenue comes forward. But at least you would have had, you know, the opportunity for something, um, as a, you know, an advantage to this list that you're trying to knock down on. So, um, and again, that's just my approach. You've got, you see, the voting board.
But I think also, too, at, at this table with all of us, we, we also have to keep an eye on going-forward costs just for our... an eye on going-forward costs just for our budget, that, um, you know, is, is that, there are all, all kinds of options, there's no right way, there's no wrong way, but in terms of going forward, because we're about to start negotiations, that, you know, any load we take on now, that has going-forward implications just for our budget, so I don't know, you know, this is the year to be taking on more since we, that's right now, an unknown, um, future in terms of our contract negotiations, so I think we should keep going forward costs in mind, until, I think it's a little bit easier maybe next year, if we, let's say we're successfully negotiating a three-year contract, we have more of an idea exactly where we are, and then would be able to, at that point, maybe take a little bit more of a risk with what we're putting in. I think we have, we already have some risk factors in there, given the nature of the timing of the negotiations.
I think one of the things that I find a little bit unnerving on this is that we only employ a .8 school psychologist to handle 850 students, and I think if I, if I got pushed to the wall here, I would propose the top and the bottom, because I think it's unconscionable to have that .8 try to service this whole high school. I, I don't, I mean, you're in the help, I mean, I'm sorry Katie, but, please, this is, this is ludicrous.
Yeah, no, I mean, I definitely
To think we don't have a full-time psychologist on board, come on, this is
I, I think mental health issues obviously are the forefront, obviously, of our nation today, I mean, you know, clearly, so
If I had to, I'd put the top and the bottom in, because I think, and if we have to cut, we have to cut, but, you know what, I, I just, I was unnerved when I read that. That's, that's not a lot
No.
To handle a school.
Well, I would like to see, I would like us to see at least the top priority be added to the final.
Well, it's a must.
That one. And this is the, this is prioritized by, um, you know, the administrative team, so I respect their, I respect their delineation.
To my point is the bottom item isn't a big cost.
Exactly.
It's not a big cost. It does put it in somewhat of a different category than, than some of the other items.
The services it could provide, um, at that cost.
I don't want to look back and say we should have, because something slipped through the cracks, that, I, I would have a hard time with that one. I never realized that it was on everyone, I just never looked at that closely.
Personally, I think, you know, we're, we're splitting hairs a little bit because this is, these are all things, things that we would all love to have, so it's a question of what do we want to ask for and what do we think the, the climate will support. I guess if I was just trying to listen and form a consensus, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as presented and approve, it sounds like the technology integration specialist request, it would be our first priority, and my motion would also include we fund the .2 school psychologist because it is a lesser cost, and I'll make that motion based on the understanding that there are two more priorities we'd love to have, but they do total near $100,000, so
More.
So in light of the support we've received for the turf field and other things we've asked for, maybe this is a, a compromise or a, a reasonable approach, so I'll, I'll put that motion forward and you guys can secede it or
Second
I, I think that's
Any further discussion?
I think it's a, it's a good motion and we have to be mindful that, you know, what these priorities are.
Well, there's the motion on the table and second, that we move, uh, the first integration specialist for technology forward and the .2 school psychologist at Foscar High School. Are we ready to vote?
Well, any further discussion?
Any further, well, I just, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? 5-0-0, we are, we will add to the final
So just, just to be clear, the number you're, uh, voting to move forward with, with those two positions is $29,408,477, and it represents 4.41%.
Can you repeat that one more time, Bill?
Which looks right based on, yeah.
I just did it by hand, good old, old-fashioned math, that's what I came up with.
And it's 4.1.
4.41.
Oh.
So that would make it 4.41? Confirmed, good.
Let it know, it's up to the people for this.
We can keep you updated between now and coming due, what's happening with the revenue forecast at the, at the town level and adjust it necessary.
Yes, that was 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Don't mind, do you have all that wording and numbers correctly?
Yep.
Thank you. Now we move on to the discussion approval of the 2013-2014 capital improvement plan.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Yukne, who has a presentation on the capital requests on the school side, and it includes one that we, well, I can't say we, the bill's been working on jointly with the town, um, we would include me, and that's not true, so the bill has been working arduously with Randy at the town side for, so turn it over to him.
You know, similar theme in most of this that we've done year after year, there are, the top priorities obviously are our technology side of it, um, we've got just over 1,200 PC-level products that are deployed throughout the schools, uh, we've been on a five-year replacement, which the town has supported for four years now to keep the, the network relatively current, uh, obviously at the same time, we look at network servers, we look at switches, we look at, you know, pretty much anything that has to be done, and, and that's the portion of the money, um, that we will spend on that. The second thing, which is, again, um, and when I first got here last year, to be honest with you, I really didn't have a good enough feeling for what our wireless infrastructure was, but it turns out we really don't have much of a wireless infrastructure, you're sitting in the only area, the high school that has wireless, so, um, we have actually put together the preliminary portion of a plan, um, that would make the high school a wireless, um, environment, and that will help us in a couple ways, that will help us, um, be able to at least allow, uh, students to come in with their own devices, whether it's an iPad, a laptop, or a handheld device, and be able to access our networks and our, um, tools that they'd have from the educational point of view that way, which would again give us, actually, you know, you think about, we have 2,700 kids within our district, 2,800 kids in the district, um, and right now we have 1,200, um, you know, PC products that they can get on, and almost every class has an environment which they'd like to use, the access of, of the internet, um, or tools in, in reading and writing and math and stuff. So that's our, our top two items, um, the, the third item, um, our, third and fourth are our two buses, um, we had replaced two of the 77-passenger buses last year, if we stay on about a two-bus on the 77 level, um, we will keep the fleet relatively current, that means every, you know, year we're basically eliminating two buses that are close to 10 years old with about 100,000 miles on them, um, pretty industry standard, I sit on the VICO board that, uh, does transportation for that side of the two, and, and when we deal with contracts on that side, that's kind of what we're looking at and making sure no one's going beyond that point. Um, the mini-buses, we run, uh, within the district for a couple of things, but most of it is for, to service our sped program, whether it's all the way from the pre-K through to the, um, you know, high school level, and, uh, two of them are wheelchair-accessible and two of them aren't, based on the needs of, of the students that we're servicing. One of them has 113,000 miles as we're sitting here today, um, so we need to take that one offline, um, and so when I'm proposing as one, uh, minibus, we tend to be in that cycle with the minibuses every second to third year, um, again, because it's not as big a program and we don't put as many miles on them, uh, that way, but this particular one, it's definitely timed. That particular bus I'd like to keep, because it's in, in good shape physically, I wouldn't want to drive it a lot more, but it's in good shape, and on the maintenance side, we use two 20-year-old, uh, versions of those to move just like our equipment from building to building as we're doing work on the building, so we have one that's really kind of in tough shape, and this would be a good replacement, so I won't be looking to trade that one in, um, but the other two on the 77-passengers, we will be trading those, and then we typically get about $3,000 on the trades, uh, towards the, towards the purchase. We were able to accomplish quite a bit on the copiers last year, um, and so what we'll be looking for is four, uh, copiers in the, in this, uh, program. Uh, there's a new item coming up, uh, which is the, her, uh, keyboarding room replacement. There's a possibility on the Brawl School feasibility study, it's the second step, uh, first step was doing the statement of interest, which we're in the process of right now, second step is if, if it's approved by the MSBA is to actually go into doing the full study and developing the plans and the basis on what you're going to
So we don't have to do this first, we have to contact them?
We have to, we have to do the statement of interest first, which we, we did use funds from last year to get the engineers to, uh, develop what our needs are, and I'm waiting for the MSBA to open my access up right now.
What's the timeframe on that?
The submission has to be in by March 24th.
And then what's the turnaround time, or don't you, is that, is that up in the air?
That's the joke of the week.
Oh, okay. Whether or not
It depends on who's sitting on their committee.
Well, or who's even paying attention. I, I give Bill credit, the first day it was open, he submitted, they have to, we have to wait, they give us a password, we're still waiting. So we don't know if anybody's reading it, can't get anybody to answer, give us
Have to have anybody sitting on the board.
So, uh, you know, they, they say it's open now, you submit the first round, wait for your secret password, and you don't get anything, so we don't know what they're looking at, so, I don't know where they are.
That's a little bit discouraging, because, you know, this, this was supposed to be this brand-new, up-to-date way of, of looking at these projects and coming back to people in a realistic timeframe, and then, that's a little bit disheartening to, to think that they're dropping the ball.
Well, the March deadlines are not that far away, so if they don't give us the, the, I think you said stuck in MSBA
Heaven, yeah.
If they don't let us get going, you know, right now we're just stuck, so.
Well, and actually, I gotta be honest with you, I think, I'm very pleased that you guys approved me going forward with the study last summer, because the timeframe that they have done, I would never have been able to get it done, you know, because they just basically sent out the notice two weeks ago that they were going to open it up, and it's going to be closed by March 24th, and I would have had to hire an engineer, get the engineer to do the study, come back with an initial proposal, and still submit all my paperwork by March 24th, I don't think it would have happened. So we, we were fortunately to be a step ahead of them in thinking of where we're trying to go.
Well, we were a step ahead of them when it came to the high school project, because we had a DUCs in order, so.
Still dependent on them.
And the final thing that you will talk about here a little bit is the, the, uh, phone system, which we did, I did bring up last year, um, and again, that's the town side as well as our side, and so it won't be a, a school proposal that way. Um, a little bit more detail, so as far as the PCs, as I said, 1,260 that we deploy now, we've, we've been replacing about 250 a year, um, to do that, uh, next year would basically cost us about $168,750. The second piece to this was the wireless, uh, environment within the high school, and as I said, the only, only part of this building currently that's wireless is the media center up and down, um, and what we're looking at is basically, we've already done an overlay map on the entire building that would tell us how many hotspots we need to have, um, and the different, uh, you know, technology, there's some, actually some great stuff out there that does this, this type of mapping, um, so we've gotten some prices in already off the state bid list just to make sure that we have valid numbers, um, this, so this would entail basically deploying close to 70 hotspots throughout the school, which would be 100% deployment, you should be able to get, um, you know, Wi-Fi everywhere throughout the building, and it would also, uh, it'd deploy, uh, three additional, uh, switches so that we could handle those devices, um, through our network, um, and the price on that would be $85,000. So the total on the technology side would be $253,750.
Before we go on to the next topic, I just think it's important to note that, you know, making the high school a mobile environment is very important to us, certainly is important to me and something that I really would like to see happen, is the way our kids learn, um, one of the few high schools that doesn't have a wireless environment, but I don't want anyone to think that we're going to what you read a lot in the paper, which is the one-to-one environment, which is the school provides a device for every student. We're not saying that, you know, for us it's baby steps, but if we could provide a mobile environment so that kids could bring their own device, that's how we would start over the next several years, is just going with a, what we call a, you know, UYO D model, just bring your own device, and, and maybe have a few available for kids who, whose families either don't have one or can't provide one, and that, that can be borrowed, like a book or, you know, any other thing that we have, so, but, um, you know, we're not looking to go to the one-to-one environment you read about in the papers where a lot of high schools are going, where they provide iPads for every student, and it sounds like a big, we're not going there, I want to make that really clear.
Can I just ask you something? You know, I know people are going to say, oh my God, they just redid the high school, but essentially what we're saying is a lot of this technology was not, you know, when we put in to redo this high school, we, the iPad hadn't arrived, so we didn't probably know to include something like this because
I mean, while, a lot of high schools were mobile and wireless five years ago, I think that's another example of something that could have been in the original proposal, because it was considered a repair project, that's a whole new system that may not, I'm not an expert in it, but it may not have qualified as one of the, um, action items under a repair project, because you're not repairing an existing wireless system, so I have a feeling it probably didn't qualify, but if it had been a whole, you know,
Renovation.
Addition, or, that would have qualified, I think that would have been something, because five years ago, even five years ago, there were many high schools that were mobile, now you'd find very few were not, so we want to at least get to the minimum, which is to have that mobile access.
And I will also say, five years ago, when you, I'm sorry, when you, when you did start this, the program here, um, because there may have been wireless access points, you know, the, the cost of the technology for, whether it was laptops, I, you know, again, iPads didn't exist, the handhelds didn't exist the way they do today, five years later,
It's not from any of that.
That there wasn't that much of a proliferation of, of the devices out there, okay, where there is now, now it's kind of like, instead of having a calculator, you have an iPad.
Five years ago, we didn't have any wireless, there were, there's not even one hotspot in any building when I arrived back.
No, but I just don't want people to think we dropped the ball on this, because we didn't, because
Well, but you did do, my point was, you did do a lot of technology though, we did an entire science, uh, technology lab, we did this lab over here that didn't exist prior to that, so there was a number of things that we did add to, to try to, again, beef up the high school level, um, as best we could, but five years is a lifetime when it comes to technology, so it's, it's, you know.
My, my point was going to be also that when, this, it was a renovation, and, and when you look at all these new high schools that we talk about have all this technology, they were renovations, they were from the ground up, that they were, so, you know, that's why we didn't have this, and again, we were trying to keep costs down, we were trying to take the structure of what we had and
I don't even think we were ready five years ago, to be honest, I can't, I mean, the state of the technology, five years ago,
We weren't thinking in this direction.
We were, we were not even close, so it wouldn't have made sense for anybody to really explore a wireless environment five years ago, because we, the other, um, underpinnings that had to be in place were, didn't exist, so I think it's now, you know, now we are at the point, we are ready for it, and, um,
We're past, we're past ready for it, kind of, right?
Okay, I'll go with a little bit, a little bit past, but not too far.
Yeah. Uh, school buses, as I said, uh, two of the 77-passengers with the trade in ends up being about $78,000 apiece, so that's $156,000, uh, and the one 28-passenger, um, is a $60,000 acquisition, so the school bus side, it would be $216,000 total cost. And just, I'm sure someone's going to ask a question sooner or later if they haven't already, one of the things I did when I first got here was I did an analysis of contracts that are out there, um, that other communities are doing, um, the cost typically runs between $275 and $310 a day per bus, uh, that you're putting out there, assuming you're doing three levels, three-tier system, three-tier being elementary, middle, and high school. When I did the calculations against our own, um, things, that basically we were running in almost the exact same dollar range, but the advantage to us is we weren't paying for the extra services for athletic trips, um, for, you know, moving kids to, uh, special programs and museums and stuff like that, because we were able to use our own buses, all we had to do was pay the hourly rate, and that's huge, because again, they're paying, every one of these districts has fairly large increases every time they want to run a bus outside of the norm, late buses, we can turn on and off late buses anytime we want, uh, with just an hourly rate, they can't do that, uh, so there's this, if you're in the same dollar range, and that's where I came down to, if you're in that same $275 to $310 range, to give up that, that control that you have, that's going to cost you more money, doesn't make a lot of sense, so if you were above it, then obviously it makes a lot of sense that you want to consider it, so.
I think we're employing people in our neighborhoods and people we know, and I, I think that's, that's a huge plus.
And as long as, as long as, to Bill's point, as long as we're not running over what it would cost to outsource, there's a lot of benefit to employing the staff, having more control of it, and people that are local, and, um, I mean, you know, some of us have worked in communities where that's outsourced, and sometimes, you really don't even know who the drivers are.
Well, I, I absolutely agree with that, I absolutely agree with what you have to say there, Martha, because I, my kids had the same bus driver their entire elementary school and the same in the middle school, and it really does mean a lot to know the people who are taking your kids back and forth each day.
And they have a greater investment, that those, you know, those people that are in the
They do.
They also do things that I don't think people realize, I mean, when weather's really inclement, you know, our bus drivers will stop and pick up a kid that hasn't made it to a bus stop, they'll, they'll do those type of things, because they, again, they know the kids, they know the families, they know it, the other buses aren't going to do that, they're going to stop at the bus stop period if your kid's not there, that's, that's fine, and we'll
Because they're running after them.
So, uh, again, I, I think that just the flexibility at the same cost is tremendous, and to the point you were both making, the fact that the, the, you know, they're so well-known point you were both making, the fact that the, you know, they're so well-known within the community, and they work with our principals, you know, if there's an issue on the bus, they have no problem talking directly to the principal about what the issues are, and even the fact that we're running our own communications level for that whole transportation side, so there's a complaint, the parents complaining to us, you know, they're getting a response from us.
It's not falling on deaf ears.
Exactly.
I don't think that you can minimize the importance of relationships, and that's what we have with our bus drivers, and they have it with us, and we have it with them, and, you know, you can't put a dollar figure on that, because it's, you've already done the, you know, benefit-cost analysis, but, you know, you just, it's there, and it provides the security and the investment that they have with us that we have with them.
Totally agree, but sometimes there is the perception that that comes at a cost, and we want people to know that all those benefits, it doesn't come at a cost, it's still a smart financial move.
It's a good investment on our part.
Yeah, we did two analyses when we came in last year, and one of them was obviously because we had the opportunity on food service, we did the exact same thing, took apart with an outside service across versus in-house, because again, you know, I'm not foolish, if I can save you $100,000 or something, I'm going to try to do that. But the reality was, when it got down to this, you know, we did, I think it made a very smart move, I think it's working very well for us, and after what's happened with the whole nutritional side of things, and the reductions, the food service companies are actually getting hurt pretty badly right now, because they're not making the money that they were making prior, and they're looking for the districts to help make them whole. So, we are fortunate that we kinda took the path we did, and actually, we're very fortunate in who we've gotten to run the thing, the programs run very well. Your smoothies are an example of somebody trying something new.
Celebrate with the smoothie samples we have tonight from the high school.
Very good.
So, you know, we did that on the food service, we did it on the bussing side of things, and I think we do take this kinda very seriously every time we have the opportunity to look at what our options are to move forward with. Copiers, as I said, you know, we produce millions of copies, eight million copies a year, and, you know, the number of machines, obviously, within each building, I mean, this building alone has, I believe, seven copiers, to make it convenient for the teachers to get their stuff done during the day, and, you know, these copiers definitely get used.
Why is this type of thing on the CIP versus, you know...
Because it's over $25,000.
Oh, all right, so if you kept it under 25, you could keep it in your regular budget.
This is kind of recurring CIP item to do, because it does cost you more if they continue to break down, and it's a nightmare.
How many do we have to play, replace on the average each year?
Well, this last year, we actually replaced five, we'll drop to four this coming year, and probably stay around the four level. What I'm doing, and similar to what Paul did before I got here, is I'm buying only on the, there's only two companies right now left that are selling copiers with three-year all-in cost, so we pay no maintenance costs at all for the first three years, and the reality is, our machines, if they make it four years, they've really outlived their life anyway. So, we can, basically, other than paying for toner and paying for paper, we're paying for no service calls at all, and when you put 2 million copies on a machine, you have service calls.
Oh, absolutely.
So, that's kinda the tact that I've taken, again, there are two suppliers still willing to offer that on the state bid list, two of them have dropped off because I guess it's not cost-effective, but, so as long as we have that advantage, obviously, we'll continue to use that. I do, this is one of the areas that I'd like to look, and have started looking at, outsourcing different options with this part of it, but that's a much bigger, you know, discussion to have, and we'd be replacing all of them if we go that route. And so far, what I've seen on it is, if you can manage the program the way we're doing it right now, we're probably better off, because they're obviously making money on how they're doing the click costs, too, so, but that's something I need to do more work on. The, one of the things that was brought up to me at the very beginning of the year, and I brought it up to Deb, and obviously, because of its total value, we decided that it was appropriate to bring at least full for the CIP side of it. The Ahorn, as you know, was redone about 13 years ago. At the time it was redone, they built a keyboarding room, which, you know, actually got kinda pieced together with different levels of keyboards, different level of control wiring, different controllers, and over 13 years, and a lot of kids learning how to operate the stuff, the equipment's actually gotten to be pretty bad, a lot of keys that no longer work properly, the controls no longer work, so that the teacher can listen to individual students as they're coming through, or groups of students, they basically have to go and, you know, plug right into their device. So, what they're looking for and hoping that they can get approval on is basically a total revamping of that keyboarding room, replacing all 40 keyboards that are in there, putting in all new controllers and wiring, and again, the hope would be that it would be another 12-year acquisition-type thing in refurbishing the room.
I'm surprised it's only $38,000.
And that's...
They've got firm prices on it, they've got some quotes on it, all the pieces and all the wiring, and everything else like that, and the controllers, and again, one of the biggest advantages they get out of the newer systems are the controls, where a teacher can basically set people into groups, so if he wants to listen to one, two, three, or 10, or the whole class at the same time, the controls would allow him that flexibility to do that. It also gives the students, there's actually music libraries in which they are able to go after and pull in, so as they're playing something, they can have the background music and stuff like that that will play along with them. Under our current technology, they can't do that, but under this technology, they could do that. So, there's a number of advantages, and again, you saw an example of what the music programs are able to produce, but they need, you know, things themselves to support that as they move forward as well, so that's what this is, and I know both Steve and Dave would love to come in if you wanna have a more in-depth discussion on this one, because they both feel very strongly about this one.
I started it probably two years ago, and I was surprised the condition it was in then, so I can imagine two years later, it's a lot worse.
Think of the number of students that have...
Oh, yeah.
I would say a high majority of the middle school kids get a shot at that room at some point in their four years in school, so it is something that's used by pretty much all the students that go through there. The last one I have, and I'm putting this out there, but to be honest with you, because there are no guarantees from the MSBA at this point, I think I need to bring it to you, as far as to let you know what the number probably is going to be, but I'm not sure that it's a thing that we approved at the CIP this year without us having anybody's approval, so, it's for $235,000. It is the development of the full plans, like we've done on the previous project, to get to the next level, and I don't mean full plans, it's not the final design thing, but it's what they do as bringing everything through schematic design and addressing all the major issues, so that you can get down to actually having a firmer number to move forward with the MSBA. Once you've done that, you'll submit that information, if the MSBA then grants that approval, then you get to obviously move to the next step, which is your full design, full specs, and actually into your development of your building plan, so...
So, if the next two months tight timeline doesn't work, what would be the timeline for this, because that's gonna be the question that the whole borough community would like to ask.
My, well, the issue will be here, first of all, assuming you got MSBA approval, as us being one of the projects that makes it through, remember, not every project makes it through, they do do a priority requirement, they do look at, you know, what projects you've done. I think even though we just finished the high school project, the high school project really is a five-year-old project, so it may not play against us that way. Assuming they do approve it, we probably wouldn't know, my guess is, until the end of May, beginning of June, that they've approved it to go to the next step. I think that would probably be like the earliest. If you don't get approved, then obviously you're back in line for, you know, the next time you're gonna open up for a statement of interest, and that could be next year at this time, it could be 18 months from now. They don't do it every six months, they don't do it every year, it really depends on what they have in the pipeline that they can approve and handle themselves financially, so...
Don't you think a lot of it's gonna depend on how much money they have available for projects?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, if they've got a lot of projects on board that they're already okay, then the money's gonna be slim-picking.
What I'm hearing, though, is it's not, the projects out there on the state level aren't feverish, there's, you know, communities have needs, and, but it's not like it was, you know, even 10 years ago, where there was just such a demand. I think you probably have a 50-50 shot if you get into the line this time around. I don't think much worse, but I don't think much better, so...
Well, I think some of the projects that stand a better chance are gonna be the renovations versus the whole new building, which is like, you know, phenomenal compared to what we were asking for. So, I would like to think that a project like this, in any school district, would have a priority, because you're trying to maintain your buildings, and you're trying to, you know, cut down on energy costs and everything else that are gonna save you in the long run, so I think, if I was sitting on the other end, I'd be looking at this.
I think, and I think, you know, kudos to the town in a lot of ways, as far as keeping up buildings, we have basically come forward with the schools, with every one of the buildings being a renovation, where a lot of districts are basically at the point where they need to basically replace the building. Now, if you're a growing district and you have a size concern, that's one of the biggest reasons why you would do that, but you look at the borough schools structurally, it's a well-built building, you know, solid exterior walls, you know, it needs all the usual suspects, windows, roof, heating systems, you know, the removal of any final asbestos that may be in the building, whether it's the cockings and windows or whatever, but it's a solid building, and it really is a good platform to start with. Difference would be, again, if that, if we needed 50% more of our common areas, our kitchens, our gyms, or something like that, then the building would not work because of those being in the center part of the building, you'd have a real hard time kind of accomplishing that, but I think the building's fairly stable as far as it's, you know, it's a student body, so there's no reason to believe that just, you know, going through a renovation isn't the right way to go here. The final one is, again, and this is not gonna be proposed as a school CIP, it's gonna be proposed as a municipal CIP, but I told Randy that I obviously would be presenting it forward, too, because I think you'll also need to vote on approving it as a support item on their side, and that is the replacement of the phone system. Currently, we have five different switches within our schools, the town has 10 in total, including our five, they're all in age anywhere...
That's incredible. They have 10, and we have five?
No, no, they have five, and we have five, it's 10 in total.
Oh, okay.
But the switches themselves are anywhere from 15 to 20 years old, there's a lot of issues with them, support is not very good, as Town Hall and we will tell you. And the other part of that is it's under, we're currently under a Centrix system, which we pay as a town $50,000 a year. The beauty of going to this newer system, which would be obviously through an internet connection, we leverage our fiber that goes throughout the district, so we actually would have the ability, whether any town building, whether it's the library, the DPW, whatever, they'd all be extensions off of this system, so we could virtually, you know, just intercom through to each other and talk. It would greatly improve the communications within the buildings relative to the intercom system, and the ability to do that for emergencies as well as regular communication. And at a $50,000 Centrix versus $150,000 estimated cost right now, you know, you're talking about a three-year payback, there's almost nothing we do on the public side that seems to have a payback, at least this does. So, I think that's kinda the way we're looking at this one, and I think the, you know, actually tomorrow, Randy and I and Paul will be going to Canton to look at what they've just done, and then we're gonna be going up to Hanover to see one of the ones that they did up there as well, so...
Is that our cost, or it's the whole town?
That's the whole cost.
For the whole town.
So, this is kinda the proposal for the whole town, Randy will have it on his side, we have it on our side, because both, you know, both sides have to kinda vote to support this as a move forward, and we'll show up on the CIP as a municipal CIP, not as a, you know, a town, as a total-town CIP item, so, not owned by us or them. So, what that gives you, if you include the $235,000 for the borough, is a school side of $782,750, and then the phone system on the town side of $150, and again, obviously subject to the CIP committee's decision, which I believe is not until...
It's March 2nd, whatever, Saturday is close to March 2nd.
How much money is in the CIP budget for this year, for...
Well, that's partly why it's gonna be very tight, I think we'll be lucky to have the same funding that we had last year, and a lot of ours, we only made it to about, I think, $560,000 last year. Now, again, without the borough, that would be fairly comparable to that, and again, I don't know how CIP will vote to approve the borough without approval from the MSBA first, so...
And why wouldn't they?
But, you know, we've had borough on the first draft of CIP for several years in a row now, and it was on last year, and we weren't ready, you know, we went forward with phase one, which we did, just as... But this request is similar to last year's without the borough, so, we're about in the same ballpark we usually request every year.
If they approve us, and we don't, you know, put the borough request in there, how long will they hold our space until the money is appropriated for us? I want us to be handcuffed on that, either.
Well, no, they do have a timeframe in which they give you enough time to get to a town meeting vote, and go through a process, and I think if you remember last time, it takes, there's a sign-off from the school committee, there's a sign-off from the select committee, yeah, there's a number of steps that they require.
So, we could possibly get to next town meeting requesting that money versus requesting...
No, I don't think you'll make it all the way to May of next year. I think we probably have some time in the fall that we'd have to be able to come forward and say, "Yes, we're accepting the money to move forward or not."
So, then where do we come up with the money?
Again, we'd have to go back to town meeting.
So, it's a special request?
Right.
Okay, all right, I can live with that. Enough for us to get all these other things, because we rarely are in limbo.
That's a hard, those are hard ducks to get in order.
I think it's tougher than, but I think it's tougher than it was when they first came out with this, yeah. I mean, I think it was pretty smooth sailing the last time we did this.
Well, they were, it was a different philosophy of leadership in that department, but I think they also were eager to prove that they were there to serve districts, and then when they called the moratorium, and now they're starting to reopen, we're just not seeing that eagerness back yet.
Well, it depends on who's sitting on it. All right, so, do you want a motion to move forward to this, or are you just gonna do this?
I want a motion to approve the CIP requests on the school side, so that we can bring it to, go view it to Randy, so that they can put the...
So, do you want the borough included in this?
Yes.
Hold on, all right, I'll make a motion to accept this presentation.
Second one. Any further discussion?
Just one comment, you know, it's funny for me, I look at Larry and so are our friends in the room, and I just, you know, I know CIP's a little different than our annual town budgets, but I just worry about the money in the town in general, and, you know, I don't see anything here really that's a luxury, I mean, maybe the keyboarding, maybe the wireless build-out, although I agree with you, Deb, I think that's a priority, at least for me personally, but buses, copiers, I mean, we need all this stuff, I just...
It's not a wish list, it's a necessity.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it is standard, and yet it's all money, so I know that...
But if we have to make a cut someplace, if they don't expect them, expect them at the CIP to bite the bullet.
Yeah, I'm in support of the motion, I just wanted to make the point that, you know...
Well, I'd just say, I, having experienced the process directly myself last year for the first time, I think it works pretty well. You know, everything gets put in one pot, everybody has their own version of characterization, but I was pleasantly surprised last year that we were all very close in how we viewed the priorities and how we rated the priorities, and it was actually, it takes a long time that day, but it actually was a pretty smooth system, and there weren't really any outliers, so it really gave me, as a first-timer, really faith in the CIP process, so I think we have to put in the request, and then let the process unfold as it did last year, because that worked pretty well, and see what ends up, as we call it, above the line.
Bruce, though, I think you're being thoughtful in your, you know, examination of these requests and the reality of the costs, obviously, associated with them, and acknowledging that, so, but we talked about the technology piece, that's really where we've been behind in, and where we're trying to ensure we have a foundation, but, I mean, I hear what you're saying, I agree with you, too.
You know, but ironically, as a committee, we're obliged to bring forward what we need on our side.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They're obliged to bring forward what they want on their side, and there'll be a meeting of the minds somewhere in the middle.
Exactly.
And you're right, Debbie, the process has been going on for a long time, it's always worked well, nobody came out bruised or bloody when the meeting was over, so...
Yes, I was about to make that point, thank you, Martha, yes.
You know, I've gone a couple times, and it's very, it's a real give-and-take, and that's where it should be, you know, but I, we're not doing our job if we don't move things forward that we know are a necessity within our system, that's our job.
And in any given year, whether you're talking about the schools or the townsite, there are things that get funded, and there are things that don't.
I just have a point of clarification, that the slide says FY13, this is FY14. Just checking.
It gets so hard when you're presenting it in one year, but it's for the next year.
Oh, that's funny, the hard part gets...
Shall we vote?
We've had a motion and a second.
We've had a motion and a second. I will now take a vote, all in favor to move this forward, as said, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank Bill for all of his work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're doing a great job. Okay, now we move on to the recommendation for an increase in substitute nurse pay.
Yes. This is actually an item that has been suggested that we attend to probably over a year since, like, back five years ago, I'm just going to say. And a few years ago, when Dr. Myers was still here, we actually did a lot of investigation about it, and something held us up, or it didn't get to the committee level, but we've had lots of conversation about our substitute pay rates, particularly for the nurses. It's come up when we talk about allergy policy, when we talk about emergency medical plans for schools, and, you know, when a nurse is out, what happens? So in Foxborough, not a lot happens when the nurse is out, so they really can't be sick, so. People around the most germs actually can't stay out, because we just cannot really attract substitute nurses. So I know that on face value, to give maybe people watching an idea, our current rate for substitute nurses is $60 a day. So as a sidebar, considering it's a six-and-a-half to seven-and-a-half hour day, a school day, you know, that's less than $10 an hour for a professional certified nurse. So you, we don't have a lot of people coming forward saying, I am willing to be a nurse substitute. In fact, I think we might have one in the queue right now that just arrived at our door, but that's a little iffy at this point, but I think we have one.
Debbie, can I just ask you one question?
Yes.
You are talking about a registered nurse.
Registered nurse, yeah.
Thank you.
So we need a licensed nurse.
Okay.
Yes.
Ironically enough, if you went to Boston, you could probably make that in an hour.
Oh, right. So we have not been successful attracting substitute nurses. I, for the committee's information-
That was very interesting, thank you for doing that.
Yes, so Wendy and Bill actually collected the nurse substitute rates for, I think it's 27 or 28 or 29, something in that range, districts.
33.
And you can see, oh, quite a few. And we're, we're, aren't we the lowest? Yes, I don't, I think there's somebody $10 above us, but we are the lowest of all of them. Nope, nobody is down in a $60 range. So it's no surprise that we can't attract substitute nurses. I would say that all districts are challenged by attracting substitute nurses, but $60 a day is not going to help that cause. So after a lot of discussion with it over the last couple of years, it really is time to bring it before the committee. This is not something that we visited, you know, every once in a while, so that we're making incremental increases, and that may be one of the reasons why it feels a lot to double it to $120 a day, because it hasn't been visited in a long time.
How many, how many times do we actually have to employ?
Okay, so this year so far, we've used five days, five-and-a-half days, exactly. So it's a, it's a little bit complicated, but we've, we had five days. So they, they don't really stay out, it's terrible, but um-
Deb, five days this school year so far, or a calendar year?
Yes, 5.5 so far this year.
So we'd average 10 or 12 a school year?
Probably. Actually, yes, less than a dozen, about 10 to 12. A dozen or less per year.
So we're talking 600 bucks?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I just have a-
Go, go, discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I just had a question.
So what are you increasing, $200 an hour? Is that what you're saying?
$120 a day.
A day, a day.
Yeah, an hour? Oh, I was just going to say, I'll sign up for that.
I'd be a nurse.
Well, we leave you next week. Excuse absence for the school.
One question I do have, Debbie, just, you know, just for thoroughness here, is that I do notice some of the communities do have these days that, you know, there, if there's a certain number of days that a substitute nurse has been employed, then it's increased. Was that something, now again, I know it's only 12 days per calendar year that you're anticipating, but is that something that you and Bill discussed or looked at in terms of this?
No, we're not looking for that, because what-
We're not looking for long-term substitutes.
We don't, we don't really have any history of needing a long-term substitute, so I, you know, that, that would be fine. So I, I really find it hard to believe, if you look at the other communities, that they employ any substitute nurse greater than 40 days, and if they do, they only go up $5 a day. So it didn't seem like that was worthy of putting forward as a proposal.
I, I think the public needs to know, too, the demands that are put on school nurses today compared to when I went to school-
Yes.
Are like 20 miles apart. And not everybody can be a school nurse. You have to have the right credentialing. I couldn't be a school nurse, you couldn't be a school nurse. So I, I think, you know, with that comes a price tag, and unfortunately, in order to get good people in good positions, you do have to pay. And quite honestly, when I, I think of some of the children that we, the special needs children and the nursing care that they need-
Absolutely.
I just don't want anybody taking care of those. If it was one of my children, I'd want to know that we had a top-notch person in that position. And I think we all need to respect that. And with that comes a price tag. And I, I'm kind of taken aback, but it's $60 a day, because no wonder why it's hard, they're not going to line up for it, that's for sure.
Six hours for $60 a day.
Or seven-and-a-half.
I mean, I love nursing, and if I could and I was retired, I'd probably volunteer to do it. But, you know, in order to attract somebody to these positions who are well-qualified, because sometimes it's like being a ER nurse, taking care of these kids.
Right.
I want to know that the person we have in here is qualified.
We actually want to put in a further plug for our nurses, in that the 10 to 12 days we use annually for substitute nurses includes when we need to sub, so that a nurse can go on a field trip with a medically needy child.
Yeah.
So that's not even all absences.
Yeah.
Us saying a lot, yeah.
But I mean, even if we, or maybe I should just say, when we vote to one, there will still be 11 communities that pay more than that, above us.
Oh, sure. Oh, that's, that's true.
We're, we're just moving kind of to the middle of this.
We're moving to about the, the middle.
Well, you have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
And any further discussion? All in favor? 5-0-0.
Okay, now I want to know, how many people are on this list that can vote?
There will be more by Wednesday.
What did we attract by raising them?
We'll see. I mean, it might not result in attracting more, but at least, at least we can say we're going to at least try to pay you something that's respectful.
Yes.
So, come along.
Step up to the plate.
Gotcha.
Okay, here we go. Moving on to our policies that we need to-
Did you check the notes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That we need to read. Several of these have only maybe one word, like gender identity, that we have to-
The ones that are in orange?
Yes.
That was helpful, thank you for-
Right. And as you see, we just take out a lot, sometimes we make, we have a correction in the year, we take out at the bottom a lot of extra wording, and they, do they want us to substitute the correct B A, B E S E regulations, now that they call it?
Correct. So do you see the gender identity has to do with any, just, any policy that includes a just nondiscrimination clause?
Right.
And then, you're right, the other M A S C recommendations were to use the, either the proper terminology or the proper new change-
So Jim Hardy was involved with all this?
Yes.
Oh, oh, yes.
The first, one, two, three, four-
Money well split, we got them on board.
Five, six-
Terrible for us to have to go through that.
Seven. The first seven are all M A S C recommendations and changes that make it lawful.
That's what we want.
So if, would you like to consider those five? We do not have, because we basically have already approved these, we just need to approve the additions and-
No, you have to do a first reading, and then you've got to do a second and accept it at that point.
Well, with, I have checked with mass. So if we wanted to just vote in the additions, because we, we need them by law and by recommendation, we could do that tonight, because we have read in entirety twice this entire thing before. So we're just-
You, you mean in the history of the school committee?
Right, because basic-
These policies have been-
So we, we can, if we, if we wanted to say, take these first five, read them, vote them as a block tonight, we can do that. We do not have to have a full second reading of these legal-
Is that what Jim Hardy said?
Oh. Yes. So if you want to go through these, it is all right.
Do you have any information, Wendy, that, is that your understanding?
Beverly talked to-
Okay.
Who did you talk to? Glenn Kocher?
Jim and-
Glenn? Mike Gilbert?
Mike Gilbert.
Okay. So that would include up and into, so let's go one by one.
Nondiscrimination is one of the-
That advice would include nondiscrimination AC, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, ACA, stop me when it doesn't include it. Core requirements, ADDA.
Right, we just have to add Department of Criminal Justice and subcontractors, and they want us to use a lot of the abbreviated initials for that.
Right. And that would also include core requirements, file ADDA dash R.
Debbie, all those, the core revisions were from the Department of Criminal Justice Information Services. So it's-
They were the ones who recommended those to you.
Right, those have to go in legal.
And that would include correcting criminal record, ADDA dash D dash one.
The only thing is, is it does seem like we are amending them.
Yeah.
I don't see any harm in considering the first reading of people.
And that's, that's what surprises me, it's being changed.
Yeah, I don't want us to stray from what we've done in the past, so that if anybody has any concerns, they can-
Maybe have an, they'll have an opportunity, come in and, and speak about it.
I, I just, maybe we should stay the course.
It is a-
It's a lot of-
It is, it is. It is an option, I was just sharing, so if we wanted to call this the first reading, that's perfectly all right.
The observation I would make is that the first seven or eight of these, the change is minimal in content, and more in labeling or, or reducing legal references. So as I went through these, I think there are minimal changes. Some of these I feel very comfortable with, whatever procedure we want to follow.
Well, unfortunately, you've got it listed as first reading. So then to come in here and turn around and tell me we don't have to do a first reading on these, I got to tell you, Bruce, having lived and died by these policies, then, you know, say what you say, you should have put, but, you know, the first five, we don't have to. I, I think we're, you're kind of misleading people when you say this is the first reading.
I don't have a problem with that, nor do I think that was the intent, the intention.
No, no, it isn't, but I don't want somebody to come back and-
But some of these have a little more, and Tina, you've looked at these more than we, some of these have more substantive change.
The two that you should probably discuss are student transportation and assignments to students to school.
Yes, right.
Okay, let's do it, then.
Right, and I mean, the last few-
Debbie, what about, I'm sorry, Debbie, what about executive sessions and emergency plans?
Right, those, those are-
That came right from official department. The emergency plan's our new requirement, so that came right out of the book.
But they have a fair amount of content-
Oh, totally.
That we should review as well, right?
Correct.
Yes, oh, yes. But to me, believe it or not, it's, even, the one, the emergency plan sounds like a lot of content, but that comes directly out of the new requirement from the Department of Ed, verbatim. So it all sounds familiar to me. So I don't actually have any problem with that, even though it looks like a lot of orange print, because that is the requirement that we were given back in August, that we had to deliver the plan by early October, exactly as is.
And then the last, that there are some very, some of the very last ones also have very little, it has gender identity, and then also just, you know, cross-reference and they just, just B E S E regulations.
Should we take each one separately, Beth?
Yes.
I think we should take each one separately and move in there.
All right.
Someone decide to make a motions and go one at a time.
Right.
Just make a motion and move it to second reading, like that.
So make a motion, do we want to read what the changes are in each one, or not?
Well, yes, we have to, what we have to, we do not have to read in entirety, the entire thing, we have to read where the recommendations come.
What are the changes?
What we're changing.
So do you and Tina want to read, take turns reading each one and identifying the changes, and then we'll make a motion to accept the first reading on each of them individually?
Okay. Yep.
Tina?
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
So nondiscrimination, file AC, the change would be in the-
Oh, it's like seven-
After paragraph number six, the paragraph following paragraph number six, the inclusion of the words gender identity in the, I, I, I don't-
You want to just read that paragraph?
I was going to say, perhaps we would just read the paragraph.
Just read the paragraph.
The Foxborough School Committee's policy of nondiscrimination will extend to students, staff, the general public, and individuals with whom it does business. No person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town or in obtaining the advantages, privileges, and courses of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability. If someone has a complaint or feels that they have been discriminated against because of their race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability, their complaint should be registered with a Title IX compliance officer.
And then on the bottom of it, for legal references?
Yes, MGL 75, 76, five amended to include 2011, strike 1993. MGL 76, 16, strike chapter 622 of the Acts of 1971, strike Board of Education, chapter 622, regulations pertaining to access to equal educational opportunity, adopted 62475, as amended 102478. Strike Board of Education, include B E S E regulations 603, CMR 2600, amended 2012. Strike Board of Education, chapter 766, regulations adopted 1074, as amended through 32878, and include B E S E regulations 603, CMR 2800.
Okay, would you want a motion on this one to move to the second reading?
We as well go.
Yeah, we may as well, if we're going to-
I'll make a motion, we move it to the second reading.
I'll second. All in favor?
Okay, the next one is nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, file ACA, and this is changed just in the legal references. Strike Board of Education, chapter 622, regulations pertaining to access to equal educational opportunity, adopted 62475, amended 102478. Strike Board of Education, include B E S E, 603, CMR 2600.[1623.25]
Any commotion to approve?
Move to second.
Move to second.
Move to second reading.
I'll second.
All in favor? Five-0-0. Query requirements.
Shall I do this one?
Sure.
Okay, query requirements, file ADDA, strike Criminal History Systems Board, and replace with Department of Criminal Justice Information Services, DCJIS, in the first paragraph, continuing after that acronym of prospective employees, volunteers, include or subcontractors, and then continuing on in that paragraph to include after employees, subcontractors as well. Generally, in this one, I, just an aside, and I know we're reading them, but we replaced, in every instance, replaced Criminal History Systems Board with Department of Criminal Justice Information Services in the acronym, and we included the terms with query requirements for prospective employees and volunteers, we included or subcontractor, so that we would be covered if we had private transportation services, but I guess...
Well, and subcontractors, with all the work that has to be done, all throughout the building.
Yes, within the buildings and as well.
Sometimes when students are present, and sometimes when students are not present.
Correct. So in the...
Anyone who comes in contact with our kids.
Exactly, anyone who comes in contact with our kids, so. In the second paragraph, strike, we replaced, we struck principal, so it says the superintendent or their designate, or their certified designees shall periodically, but not less than every three years, obtain all available criminal offender record information from the strike Criminal History Systems Board, and include DCJIS on all employees, individuals who regularly provide school-related transportation to students, including taxicab company employees and volunteers, who may have direct or unmonitored contact with students during their term of employment or volunteer service. And then they...
Tina, so basically, this policy just makes the superintendent the sole person responsible for...
Superintendent or your certified designee, but it strikes principal.
It used to be principals could also do it, but that is no longer the case.
Exactly, and the same change is made in the subsequent paragraph, we just strike principal after superintendent, continuing down to the one, fifth paragraph. In accordance with state law, all current and prospective employees, include subcontractors, volunteers, and persons regularly providing school-related transportation to students of the school districts, shall sign a request slash acknowledgement form, authorizing receipt by the Foxborough Public Schools of all available query data from the strike Criminal History Systems Board, include DCJIS. In the event that a current employee has questions concerning the signing of the request slash acknowledgement form, he/she may meet with the strike principal, superintendent, or designee, however failure to sign the query request form may result in a referral to local counsel for appropriate action. Completed request slash acknowledgement forms must be kept in secure files. The strike Foxborough School Committee, the superintendent or strike principals or designee certified to obtain information under this policy shall prohibit the dissemination of school information for any purpose other than to further the protection of school students. In the next paragraph, we're just replacing Criminal History Systems Board with DCJIS. On the next page, the third paragraph, same, same switch, Criminal History Systems Board with DCJIS, and including query request slash acknowledgement form. The next paragraph, it includes, the, the second sentence, the applicant shall be provided with a copy of the criminal record, the Foxborough Public Schools' query policy, the DCJIS information concerning the process in correcting a criminal record, advised of the parts of the record that make the individual unsuitable for the position or license, and given an opportunity to dispute the accuracy or relevance of the query record. In the next paragraph, the first sentence, strike the words "and/or volunteer" form, and in the last sentence of that same paragraph, include the word subcontractor. And then the next page, the last paragraph, just strike Department of Criminal Justice Information Systems and include the acronym DCJIS.
Make a motion, move to second reading.
I'll second it. All in favor? Great.
The next one is query requirements, file ADDA-R, and just in the first paragraph, replace Criminal History Systems Board with Department of Criminal Justice Information Services, and further on in the same paragraph, just replace the acronym CHSB with DCJIS twice.
Make a motion to move to second reading.
I'll second it. All in favor? Great. How is your voice holding up?
I'm doing okay. I'm saving the long ones for you, Beth.
Oh, yes.
The next one is information concerning the process in correcting a criminal record, file ADDA-E-1. First paragraph, switch Criminal History System Board, CHSB, with Department of Criminal Justice Information Services, DCJIS, same switch with the acronyms in the second paragraph, CHSB to DCJIS twice, same switch in the third paragraph, CHSB to DCJIS, and the inclusion of the website, HTTPS, colon, backslash, backslash, I, C-O-R-I, dot, C-H-S, dot, state, dot, mass, dot, U-S, backslash, I-C-O-R-I, and also strike the prior website, and, and change the acronym CHSB to DCJIS, and in the last paragraph on the same page, strike query unit and replace it with DCJIS.
Move to second reading.
I'll second that. All in favor? Great. And then we have also, they just included, this is a new complete acknowledging form. That's our current... That's our current form, just to keep it all in connection with, no changes there.
Well, that's why we included acknowledgement.
Right, just so you'd have a complete packet. Now, these are required by Mass. to be included with our executive sessions, so these are just additions.
Shall I continue?
Sure.
Executive sessions, file BEC, the second paragraph, the sentence shall read, the chairman or in his/her absence, the presiding member will state the purpose for the executive session by stating all subjects that may be revealed without compromising the purpose for which the executive session was called. And then paragraph two, the next paragraph two, says, the discipline or dismissal, including the hearing of charges against a member of the committee, a school department employee or student or other individual. The individual has certain rights enumerated in the law, including requiring the committee to hold an open session should the individual so request. And on the next page, the inclusion of the second and third paragraph in their entirety, I will read them. The school committee chair and the superintendent will review executive session minutes for possible declassification on at least a quarterly basis, and if necessary, will consult with legal counsel. The school committee chair will bring minutes recommended for declassification to the school committee for a vote either as part of a consent agenda or for individual action. In either case, there shall be an announcement of the declassification of minutes. When a specific set of executive session minutes not yet declassified is requested by a member of the public, the school committee shall render a decision on declassification at its next meeting or within 30 days after the request, whichever occurs first.
So, yeah, I have a question about this. So this is basically those minutes that have not been released because of some, you know, meeting the criteria that's set forth in this. And so that, therefore, you can't just sit on these forever, you have to at least, they're saying quarterly, review them.
Right. They're using the phrase declassification for non-released.
Right, okay.
And as soon as the purpose for which the executive session no longer is in play, you release it.
Right.
Just like that, just using different...
Right, I just wanted to make sure that people at home are aware of that, so it's basically timeframes. I think it's good too, because, yeah.
We've wondered that before.
Yeah, we have, okay, great.
Everybody is clamoring to get on the policy subcommittee right about now. Oh, yes, I know.
We had a lovely meeting of the policy subcommittee, we enjoyed discussing...
Do you want a motion?
You know, if we could, if I could just continue reading, then Martha could vote on them, she stepped in.
I like the question on this one.
Yes.
I know at the beginning of the year, you had talked about how you changed chairman to chairperson or chair, and this, on this one, it still says chairman, I didn't know if you wanted to.
I noticed that, I just assumed have chair, because over here in one of the, in the red, it says school committee chair.
That is a good question.
So I would think we would want it, yeah, I think we want to keep it consistent. And Wendy, I want to thank you for doing this this way, to make it very easy for us to flag and read, so that we see what we needed to vote on. Thank you very much.
To use that tracks.
What?
That's called tracks, it's on Microsoft Office.
Well, thank you very much, because that, it made it much easier.
And Mass. uses that system now, so when it comes, when it comes from them, it comes this way, and then when you can customize those.
Yep.
So, kudos to them, because they send the changes to us in a way that uses the tracking system, as you can see it immediately.
Are we on emergency plans?
Shall I continue with emergency plans?
Yes.
Okay, emergency plans, file EBC, we're going to include, start beginning with the fourth paragraph, some new information. The superintendent shall develop, in consultation with the school nurses, school physicians, athletic coaches, trainers, and local emergency medical services agencies, an emergency medical response plan for each school in the district. Each plan shall include, one, a method establishing a rapid communication system linking all parts of the school campus, including outdoor facilities, to local emergency medical services, along with protocols to clarify when EMS and other emergency contacts will be called. Two, a determination of EMS response times to any location on the campus. Three, a list of relevant contacts with telephone numbers and a protocol indicating when each person shall be called, including names of experts to help with post-event support. Four, a method to efficiently direct EMS personnel to any location on campus, including the location of available rescue equipment. Five, safety precautions to prevent injuries in classrooms and on the school campus. Six, a method of providing access to training in CPR and first aid for teachers, athletic coaches, trainers, and other school staff, which may include CPR training for high school students, provided that school committees may opt out of instruction in CPR pursuant to Section 1 of Chapter 71. And seven, in the event the school possesses automated external defibrillators, AEDs, the location of all available AEDs, whether the location is fixed or portable, and a list of personnel trained in its use. Plans shall be submitted at least every three years by September 1. Plans must be updated in case of new construction or other physical changes to the school campus. Legal reference, MGL 69-8A, Sections 3, 6, 3 of Chapter 159 of the Acts of 2000, and include under cross-references, JL, comma, Student Welfare, and JLC, Student Health Services and Requirements.
Can you move to second reading?
I'll second that. All right, now we need to take a vote on the executive session one and both on the emergency one. First, I will take, to me, what?
I just made a motion on the emergency one.
So we should vote on that one first?
All right, we'll vote on that one first, all in favor? Five-0-0.
Make a motion on the executive session, just thank you for waiting.
Yes. Second that. All in favor? Five-0-0, excellent.
Student transportation, file EEA, in the first paragraph, change the word pupils to students, and under eligibility, the first paragraph, again, change pupils to students, we're going to do that throughout, actually. The next paragraph, bus routes and stops. Bus routes are established under the direction of the superintendent, designee, in order to provide authorized bus stops within a reasonable walking distance of the home of every strike pupil, includes student entitled to transportation. In no case will the walking distance exceed one mile. Elementary bus stops will be at or near the homes of kindergarten students on these routes. At noon, separate transportation will be provided for all students in half-day kindergarten. It is the parent legal guardian's responsibility to notify the transportation supervisor a minimum of two weeks prior to the start of the school year if the student's regularly scheduled stop is different from that associated with the home address. All requested pickup and drop-off locations must be within the student's assigned school district. Parents may request, with a minimum of one week's prior written notice, a change of pickup or drop-off location only if said location is on the same bus route the student was assigned to. Exception to the same bus route and school district requirements is for elementary-age students who attend before or after school programs at the YMCA in Foxborough. And then, on the paragraph under administration of the program, change pupils to students, and the last paragraph on the page, paragraph one, change pupils to students in three places. On the next page, under discipline, paragraph A, change pupils to students, and paragraph B, change pupil to student.
They're made of tissue paper, these bottles, you squeeze them in. Make a motion, move to...
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
We save money.
You can't squeeze when you want to turn.
Oh, there are some that are even thinner than this, that...
Affirmative action?
Affirmative action.
Okay, affirm, I got, I got a little distracted by the water talk. Um, affirmative action, sorry, I was on a roll.
Anything interesting going on, I'd like to look over there, too.
Affirmative action for the recruitment of staff, file GBA. The Foxborough School Committee subscribes to the fullest extent to the principle of the dignity of all people and of their labors, and will take action to ensure that any individual within the Foxborough Public Schools who is responsible for the hiring and/or personnel supervision understands that applicants are employed, assigned, and promoted without regard to their race, creed, color, age, sex, gender identity, national origin, disability, or sexual orientation. Every available, every available opportunity will be taken in order to assure that each applicant for a position is selected on the basis of qualifications, merit, and ability. The Foxborough Public Schools assures equal employment opportunity in recruitment programs for all staff positions. Programs will be administered without regard to race, creed, color, sex, or gender identity. Full consideration will be given to disabled or handicapped persons in work that they are qualified to perform. We pledge ourselves to a determined effort in support of this belief. And then, under legal references, strike 603, CMR 26-08, and include B-E-S-E Regulations 603, CMR 26-00.
Second that. All in favor? Five-0-0.
Licensed employee hiring, file GCF, paragraph one, there will be no discrimination in the hiring process due to age, sex, gender identity, creed, race, color, national origin, disability, sexual orientation, or place of residence. Paragraph three, include, as the last sentence, for those positions where the hiring authority rests with the school committee, a representative screening committee may be established by the school committee, or the school committee may direct the superintendent to establish a screening committee to assist the superintendent in making his or her recommendation to the school committee. And then under...
What needs a change?
So we want to make sure it says his slash her.
Yes, I'm sorry, I included that in my reading.
Right.
Isn't it funny that they're not, like, sending it to us that way?
It should say his slash her.
Absolutely.
Under legal references, we're going to include B-E-S-E 603, CMR 700, comma, 26-00, and 44-00.
Move to second.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Instructional materials, file IJ, paragraph five, they must provide for all students an effective, basic education that does not discriminate on the basis of race, age, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity, physical disabilities, or sexual preference, and include, under legal references, B-E-S-E Regulations 603, CMR 26-00.
Move to second.
All in favor? Five-0-0 again.
We're getting there. Equal educational opportunities, file JB, in the first paragraph, the second sentence should read, it will, it also will offer careful consideration and sympathetic understanding of their personal feelings, particularly with reference to their race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical and intellectual differences. In the next paragraph, we're going to strike...
The old name.
The old name.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think I should just read the sentence. To accomplish this, the Foxborough School Committee and its staff will make every effort to comply with the letter and spirit of the Massachusetts Equal Educational Opportunities Law, and strike the parenthetical that says known as Chapter 622 of the Acts of 1971, which prohibits discrimination in public school admissions and programs. And then, the law has been amended to include the words gender identity after sex and before religion in the next paragraph. And then, under legal references, strike Board of Education, Chapter 622, Regulations Pertaining to Access to Equal Educational Opportunity, adopted 624-75, amended 1024-78, and strike Board of Education, Chapter 766, Regulations 1074, amended through 328-78, and include B-E-S-E Regulations 603, CMR 26-00, and B-E-S-E Regulations 603, CMR 28-00.
Move to second.
I'll second that. All in favor? Five-0-0.
Student to student harassment, file JBA, in the second paragraph, should read harassment prohibited by the district includes but is not limited to harassment on the basis of race, sex, gender identity, creed, color, national origin, sexual orientation, religion, marital status, or disability. And under legal references, strike Board of Education, and include B-E-S-E 603, CMR 26-00.
Move to second.
Second that. All in favor?
Assignment of Students to Schools, file JCA. We're going to strike the paragraph that reads, "Special permission may be granted for the following reasons." Striking all of this, strike paragraph one, if the change involves an exceptional student or hardship case, or if there are medical considerations. Strike paragraph two, if the administration deems that it is in the best interest of the student, of the schools, and for disciplinary and administrative reasons. Strike paragraph three, if the legal residence of a student changes from one attendance area to another during the school year, special permission may be granted for the student to remain in his former school. Permission will not extend beyond the current school year. And strike paragraph four, to permit secondary school students to take courses not offered in their assigned schools. So this, this entirety of the section will read, generally, students will be required to attend school in the attendance area in which they reside unless the superintendent has granted special permission.
I have a question. So that gives you the ability without having to follow any specific guidelines?
Right. We do, we do have a history of practice that we will continue to follow, really without any changes. But this original language came from MASC originally, and if you look at number four, to permit secondary students to take courses and offer in their assigned schools, that's for a district that has more than one high school. And we, that's not even, that doesn't even pertain to us. So the original MASC language, we decided was a little bit restrictive. And so generally, if you live in the Burrell-Igoe-Cheyenne District, you'll attend that school, but exceptions may be made in certain circumstances. For example, we do allow students to stay in the school for their fourth grade year. Let's say you move at the end of third grade year. We don't want to any transition, so we wouldn't want the child to transition to new school for one year and then go to Ahern. So we do have certain circumstances we follow as a practice, and we try to be very consistent with that so that families don't perceive that we're treating people differently or that we have different rules depending on who you live or where you know. We're very consistent with how we apply those exceptions. But to be honest, at least once a year, you get an exception that we never thought of before and that a family has a very unique circumstance, and we do take the cases individually.
I, I think it's, it's better because otherwise, and it's, we did this for this one, and why can't you do, I think leaving it up to you and your discretion is a better way to go. I'll move this to second.
Just a point before, at the bottom, I'm sorry. At the bottom, that, is that to be included in this? That's what I, I thought.
Which one? I'm sorry.
At the bottom of the page, it says, "The following guides our current practice." I didn't.
Oh, no, no.
I didn't intend that that would be.
No, that was for, that was.
It's an FYI.
That copy actually was for when you, you were meeting, just as an FYI. That's what our practice is, but that's not part of the policy. It was like.
No, no, so that, yeah.
Oh, that's not part of the policy.
So second that, as amended that it doesn't include that. All in favor? Five zero zero. This one's it.
Here we go.
Case okay.
Who put all these on the same agenda?
Who's counting?
Did the manager do this to me?
School choice. Come on, Tina. You're almost there.
You're, you're doing.
I'm on it all.
Tina, you're wonderful.
This is filed JFBB. In the first paragraph, the first sentence, change the legal reference to MGL 7612, capital B. And paragraph six should read, "The Foxborough School Committee affirms its position that it shall not discriminate in the admission of any student on the basis of race, color, religious creed, national origin, sex, gender identity, age, sexual orientation, ancestry, athletic performance, physical handicap, special need, academic performance, or proficiency in the English language." And under legal references, include BESE Regulations 603 CMR 26.00.
Move just a second.
Second that. All in favor? Tina.
Student.
You're a hall.
Last one. Student Health Services and Requirements, file JLC. The sixth paragraph should read, "The Foxborough Public Schools shall maintain a district-wide emergency response book as required by law, which shall be utilized by Foxborough Public Schools personnel for handling emergency situations. In addition, principals will maintain and follow the medical emergency response plan developed for handling emergencies in their building. Additional emergency procedures shall include the following," and the next paragraph shall read, "Provision for care beyond first aid, which would enable care by the family or its physician." Strike the words "or" the paramedic assistance unit of the fire department and include "or" the local emergency medical services agencies. In instances when the, strike paramedic assistance unit and include EMS is required, every effort shall be made to provide the unit with the student's emergency card, which lists any allergies or diseases the student might have. Under legal references, include.
Period, actually, period.
No, it's a list.
Oh, okay. That's a little.
It's a, it's a continued list, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. Under legal references, on the next page, include 698A. And under cross references, include EBC Emergency Plans and JLCD Administration of Medication to Students.
Move just a second.
I'll second that. All in favor? Five zero zero.
Bruce, I got a hunch you wouldn't survive the single we put in revising them.
Oh, yeah.
We met every Friday for the whole summer and got it done.
Right in this room.
Right in this room, and let me tell you, it was brutal, but we did it. I think even mask was shot.
I'm really sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, oh, I know.
It's not that the word tedious comes to mind, but I appreciate the people who.
Were you involved with that when we did that?
No. No, I, no, no, I wasn't. But I, I, I just really want to thank Wendy for all the detailed work she put in. And to you folks who volunteered to be on that meeting, please.
And I, I have to tell you, reading them really is painful, as it is. It really is.
Oh, it is. I, I think that's.
Well, it's rookie indoctrination.
Well, we can't say we haven't done it our eyes and.
Live by the sword, die by the sword, you know?
It's a tough one.
It is. I don't know.
Very well done, Tina. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're a pleasure to work with.
Want me to open your wallet? No.
No.
I know how to do it now.
All right. Well, here we are. On to Other Matters. Other Matters. Yes.
How about you? Because of the nature of Monday last week, normally we'd have our meetings, you know, on the first and third, and so this makes it the last Monday in January, but it also bumps up with the first meeting in February. So our first meeting in February is actually a week from tonight. So I don't know how the committee feels about the need to hold another meeting a week from tonight, or if you don't feel the need, if you would consider canceling it. We get through our budget things tonight, which is the most important, and.
That really was, was the one thing that we had hanging over our head. If we've done that, I don't, unless you've got something more pressing.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, do you have anything?
We don't. No. So it's really the will of the committee.
Free week.
Should we make a motion? No, we're not going to have it, or are we doing?
Yeah, we have to, we have to make a formal motion and take a vote.
I think we should come and just do the second reading, Bruce. He doesn't even have to respond to that.
Maybe we need the acapella group to come back again.
I think Tina needs more than one week.
Okay. No, she doesn't have to reread them. She doesn't have to reread them the second time.
No, but if, this gives people, if they have questions, time to respond to us so that we can address it.
I'll make a motion that we do not meet next week.
I will second that.
All in favor? Five zero zero. The meeting is officially canceled, and you can post that for us, please, Wendy. Thank you.
And who would let Megan know? Wendy, would you, or?
Owen, Owen.
Yeah, will you? Okay, thank you.
So no meeting, so we will see you after February vacation. Right?
Sounds like a plan.
I need to remind you all that our ATCOM meeting on Wednesday, the time has been bumped to 7:45. It is no longer at 7:00. And I would also like people to make note that our day on the hill this spring in April will be Wednesday, April 30, at the end of the month. So I don't know if you'd be available to go. You and or Megan, both, whatever. Other matters? No.
This, the Wednesday, February 6th, there's going to be a blood drive at the high school, and it's a competition that is actually being run through Bob's discount furniture. And if we get 30% of the school to donate blood, or like 30% to, to donate, like, unit-wise, then we become eligible for a scholarship for the high school seniors. And there's actually, I think there's six that we become eligible for, but they're all like based upon how much blood we get, so.
Now, does that mean the school committee members could come and contribute?
Anyone, anyone, it's on, six, 2:30 to 7:30 after school.
So how many people do you need total about?
We need 154 units between this blood drive and the next one that we have, but the following one that we have in the spring is only for the students.
Okay. It's actually an American Red Cross activity that they're supported by Bob's discount furniture. I want to make sure I'm clear of that. So it's American Red Cross, working with the schools, and they get assistance, it's not.
Now, if you made your quota with this one drive, then you'd be in.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
But you would still hold the one for students that.
Well, you have, you have to have the two blood drives. It's two blood drives and 30%. So we do have to have that.
Excellent. What a fine project.
It really is.
Any, any other others? All right, I will, oh, yes.
Sam. Also, on February 6th, we have our second annual Parent Technology Night that will be taking place here at the high school. It will start, doors open at 6:00. It actually starts at 6:30 in the auditorium with a very brief overview, and parents have the opportunity to register online for three different sessions that will run 20 minutes apiece, and they really are focusing on innovative technologies that teachers are using in their classroom to enrich their classroom instruction. Many of the sessions are being repeated from last year because there were great feedback from parents that they wish that they could have attended more. So we're including many of the sessions from last year, and we've added other sessions as well. So please register by the link right on the homepage of the Foxborough website, and babysitting will also be provided that evening for those parents who are in babysitting for the children by the National Honor Society and Student Council. Have them come early and donate blood. And drop off their babies.
All right.
I have since, one more thing, the Ahern School's Winter Carnival is this Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. So I know it's the, it's the PAC's big fundraising event, and I just wanted to mention that that's happening.
This winter carnival?
The Winter Carnival at the Ahern School.
Do, do any of you happen to know, is it this Friday night, is Thursday, is it Thursday during the day and Friday night, the book fair at Taylor? Does anybody remember?
I'm District Calhoun.
Okay, I'll have. This Saturday, the times again, please?
I think it's between 11:00 and 2:00.
Thanks. Is that all?
Yep.
All right. I will entertain a motion in the second by roll call, and then a roll call vote to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiating strategies with non-union personnel, the food service employees. We will not return to open session after this.
All right, the motion.
I'll second that. Bruce? Aye. The chair votes aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.